Five. So I will call to order the April 7th, 2022, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. Just will note that Councilmember Hensley is out of town and will be joining us remotely. But we begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to meditate or pray as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll rise, please. You'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We have one person signed up here in person for public comment. If there is anyone online who would like to make public comment, if you could raise your hand. Do you see anybody?
Lynn has raised her hand.
Lynn? Lynn Williams?
No last name, but I assume Lynn Williams. And then Tracy Groover.
So two people?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So we will start out with Crystal Colley. If you could just give your name and address for the Clerk's record, please.
Crystal Colley. I live at 627 Fifth Avenue West here in Hendersonville. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Seventh Avenue Community Garden. I was able to have a group come together, volunteers, on March the 8th, and we cleaned up the Seventh Avenue Community Garden. And it's located in the Green Meadows Community. I was able to send some before and after pictures. Were you able to view them? I'm asking, because we were told that there may be some money left over for this community garden. And so it was a consensus with this group that it would be best, if you guys agreed, if the City Council agreed, I'm sorry, if the picnic tables could be replaced. And we can make this more of an ADA type of community garden. So those who have disabilities, children that are in wheelchairs, can have the accessibility to sit at the community garden. Four benches, possibly a fence enclosure, approval for an art installation, if not this year, next year, to brighten up the garden. Also, if you could consider those things. There is, within this group of volunteers, there are men who are very handy that could save money by building, also some tall planters. In order that people that may have disabilities or issues where they can't bend down, they want to help out with the community garden, they could be a part of it. And there's an example behind you. Oh, sorry. You can see it. Where I've shown, you know, you can come up to the garden if you're in a wheelchair so that they can also be a part of this. So there's a lot of volunteers. We just need the approval. And if there is a presentation that can be scheduled, we're willing to come in and discuss the Seventh Avenue Community Garden with you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the effort that has already gone into it. Something we will have to discuss. Okay. Next, Lynn Williams.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just want to make sure you can hear me. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. Thank you for your time today. Just pulling up my notes here. I'm going to provide an update. One of the items is regarding a new business item that was removed and postponed regarding the HPC's Boyd Park recommendation. After my correspondence with HPC Chair Jones, more time will be needed to work with all HPC members and hopefully include public feedback before submitting the HPC's Boyd Park recommendation. I want to thank the council for considering any options for preserving Boyd Park and the care that's been taken so far with regards to lower ecore and mini golf. I continue to request both the City Council and HPC utilize their authority to authorize a historical report for consideration and/or designation of historic Boyd Park and lower ecore and mini golf. Friends of Boyd Park and lower ecore and mini golf invite community members to attend a presentation and forum on Saturday, April 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the main branch of the Henderson County Library titled "Past, Present, Future: Historic Boyd Park and Lower Ecore and Mini Golf." Please bring family photos and memories to share. Secondly, friends of Chadwick Avenue is leading a street cleanup on Earth Day, April 22nd, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. For more information, feel free to contact me at Lynn, L-Y-N-N-E underscore Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, at outlook.com. And apparently this will also coincide with the city of Hendersonville's Earth Week proclamation. So that's awesome. Let's see. Thirdly, I've been in communication with Councilmembers Smith and Planning Director Holloway about the adjustment to the Greenville Highway Mixed Use Ordinance, originally planned for this month's planning board meeting. It's now delayed. And I ask the City Council to please consider pausing approvals or a brief moratorium on approvals for developments in this Greenville Highway Mixed Zoning Use District until the ordinance is revised. Currently scheduled for June. Right now, this would not interfere with any current applications submitted. Lastly, it is my understanding that the ethics complaint I filed regarding Councilwoman Hensley is tentatively scheduled for next meeting in May, as agreed. Thank you so much for your time and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Tracy Groover?
Good evening. I just wanted to comment on the proposal that the Affordable, the Housing Assistance Corporation has put forth. I don't see that on the agenda for tonight, so I'm not sure if that's been postponed. But I did want to just comment that I hope that the City Council will strongly consider approving this new housing development because we have a huge need for more affordable housing in Hendersonville. I know you're aware of that. But, you know, as someone who works for Thrive, the organization that does housing for people who are experiencing homelessness, I can tell you that our waitlist at this moment is more than 400 households who are waiting for housing. And many of those households are waiting because there is no available housing for them. So I hope that you will consider approving that development and just know that we are in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. We had one additional digital comment that came in from Leslie Carey, 404 Randall Farm Road, Hendersonville. And this is what she wrote. My name is Leslie Carey, and I am requesting grant money for the community garden on Seventh Avenue near Sullivan Park. The garden already has a team of volunteers working on giving the garden attention, but we need more help. The garden offers a fantastic opportunity for generations of people to be involved with cultivating and harvesting produce. There are skills needed at all levels and a chance for many people to be involved. This community garden is a wonderful opportunity for Hendersonville, and your support would give back tenfold. Kindly take this opportunity into consideration for the good of the people. So that is the last of our public comment. We will now look at the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, if I want to move something from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, is this the moment?
Next.
That's the next one.
Next motion.
Got you. Okay.
Okay. This is for the agenda as distributed this evening. Anything anyone wants to add to that? Madam Mayor, was there an addition to closed session?
Good.
Closed session is listed on.
I do. Good point, Madam Attorney. Would like to add, in addition to the previously advertised need to add 143, 318, 11, A4, and A5, which is related to economic development and acquisition of property. So when we make that motion, can we just go A1, A4, A5, and then read the rest of it?
I'd like to at least include a descriptive word. So if you just say, in addition to what's there, to consider acquisition of property and economic development, that would do it.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to move that the agenda be approved as amended?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, we have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree? Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So we have our agenda, consent agenda. Are there items you would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Items Q and T. For the purpose of bringing awareness to these.
So Q and T.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We can move those to new business? That would go after C on new business? Okay. Is there anything else anyone would like to have moved? Not a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll again. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So we have the rest of those items taken care of. All right. Now we get to have some very pleasant presentations here. So I'm going to come forward for at least the first few. And the first one, okay, is for Child Abuse Prevention Month, Week of the Young Child. And whoever wants to come up, come on up. Have as many of you as you want. So this is a proclamation. Whereas child abuse can cause long-term psychological, emotional, and physical harm that has lasting consequences for survivors and their families, and whereas we value our valuable children as vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, as well as both the current and future quality of life in our community. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and the concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children are able to foster all children growing to their full potential. And whereas the effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas in 1971, the Week of the Young Child was established by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the world's largest early childhood educational association. And whereas Safe Light, Smart Start Partnership for Children, Children and Family Resource Center, and other youth-serving agencies of Henderson County are collaborating for public attention to focus on child abuse and ways to improve opportunities for our children and their families. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, including the Week of the Young Child, in the city of Hendersonville, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby supporting early childhood programs and preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Thank you, Mayor Volk.
One, two, three.
And Mayor Volk, we have some blue pinwheels. The blue pinwheel has been a nationally recognized symbol for child abuse prevention. So there are some blue pinwheels for you as well.
All right.
Thank you so much.
We will share these. Thank you. Next, we have Earth Week. Who is getting this one?
I'll do it.
I was gonna say, I'll do it.
All right. Earth Week 2022. Whereas the global community faces challenges such as health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity. And whereas we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources. And whereas the city of Hendersonville has implemented many environmental sustainability programs, including Fix a Leak Week, Rain Barrels, Stormwater Stroll. And whereas in a partnership with Mountain True, the city of Hendersonville implemented the Working to Be Plastic Free Program this year, encouraging our business community to take steps toward eliminating single-use plastics. And whereas the city of Hendersonville honors pollinators such as birds and insects, including the monarch butterfly, and their importance in our environment and food supply chain by partnering with Bullington Gardens to continue our Beast City accreditation, community mural projects, outreach initiatives, pollinator gardens, and by signing the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And whereas we continue to be reminded of the extraordinary importance of maintaining a clean and healthy environment and of the necessity to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. And whereas April 22nd, 2022, marks the 52nd anniversary of the Earth Day movement, let it be known that the city of Hendersonville, North Carolina, encourages all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet and its resources. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim April 19th through April 24th, 2022, to be Earth Week in the city of Hendersonville, and encourage all our citizens and businesses to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and encourage others to undertake similar actions. All right. There we go. Okay. And I don't know. Are you going to stay up for the next one? The Monarch Pledge? Which we probably should have done before we did that one.
That's okay.
That's all right. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas the city of Hendersonville is deeply concerned about the decline of the monarch butterfly population due to the eastern population having fallen by as much as 90%. And whereas the monarch scientists attribute the population decline to degradation and loss of summer breeding habitat in the U.S. and loss of winter habitat in south-central Mexico and coastal California. And whereas the city of Hendersonville and surrounding communities have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly through public and private action and by educating residents about the cultural significance of monarchs. And whereas the city of Hendersonville recognizes the importance of creating monarch and pollinator habitat at parks, gardens, and other green spaces that every member of our community can equally enjoy, and that our work to help save the monarch butterfly intentionally engages all parts of the community, ensuring that historically marginalized communities are not left out of the work or the many benefits this work will create. And whereas the city of Hendersonville is aware that when local governments speak up and take action, our communities notice. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby commit to help restore habitat for the monarch butterfly within the city of Hendersonville and encourage our residents to do the same so that these magnificent butterflies will once again flourish across the continent. There you go. All right. Let's see. Next, the Environmental Sustainability Board Annual Presentation. Is she on? Is she doing that online?
I think so. I think so.
Okay. Is Mary Ellen Christian online?
I'm not seeing her. Mary Ellen, if you're online, would you please raise your hand?
No?
Well, we'll come back to that, I guess.
Okay. If she does come on, we will continue. Okay. Next, Barbara Hughes. If you will come forward. Our Main Street Champion for the year.
So every year, the North Carolina Main Street Program honors Main Street Champions since the year 2000. This year will be 837 Main Street Champions throughout the state of North Carolina. And that's to honor the people who are volunteers, who go above and beyond to make sure that our downtowns are the beautiful, vibrant places that they are. So this year, we are recognizing Ms. Barbara Hughes, the owner of Narnia Studios, as our Main Street Champion. And our North Carolina Main Street Program was a virtual conference this year. And so they put together a little video for each of the champions. And so we'd like to play that real briefly to speak about Barbara.
Barbara Hughes, Hendersonville. Barbara Hughes has owned Narnia Studios in downtown Hendersonville for 27 years. Known for her creativity, Barbara has created and sponsored nine annual events that have made significant impacts to downtown Hendersonville. These events have become fixtures of Hendersonville, with the oldest, Chalk It Up, entering its 26th year. Chalk It Up began when Barbara's children were allowed to adorn the sidewalk in front of her store with vivid chalk drawings. The creative art form has blossomed into one of the most beloved and endearing events that downtown Hendersonville offers. Chalk It Up now draws over 150 artists each year who turn Main Street into an outdoor art gallery with amazing chalk art. Barbara never stops thinking of ways to help make downtown Hendersonville a great place for the locals and tourists and is willing to lead such efforts. Downtown Hendersonville owes Barbara Hughes a debt of gratitude and is honored to name her as its North Carolina Main Street Champion.
All right. And we just have a little recognition for you with a medal. Like to recognize that. And thank you for everything that you do for downtown.
I appreciate it. I just want to say I'm humbled by your generous accolades. I give God the glory and thanksgiving for everything, all the blessings he's given me, my Savior, my family, my business, my community, and all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't sit down yet. Like to invite Jordan Barnes to come up as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the recognition. Barbara, my name is Jordan Barnes. I'm the regional representative here for United States Senator Tom Tillis. I'm honored to be here on his behalf. And I brought a letter that he penned. If you don't mind, I'll read it to you. Says, Dear Ms. Hughes, I'm happy to extend my sincerest congratulations to you on being named a North Carolina Main Street Champion. This is an outstanding achievement, and I join your family, your friends, and your colleagues here in commending you in this honor. Your work celebrating and preserving Hendersonville's character, local history, while fostering economic vitality has culminated a distinctive legacy that will be appreciated for generations to come. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to our community in Hendersonville. Congratulations.
Okay. Recognition for completion of UNCC Fire and Rescue Management Institute. Mr. Connet?
Mayor Volk, members of City Council, I'd like to invite Chief Miller and Deputy Chief Ward and Battalion Chief Miller to please come forward. Y'all just stand right there for a moment, please. It's my distinct pleasure to recognize these three gentlemen for the completion of the University of North Carolina at Charlotte's Fire and Rescue Management Institute. The institute is a professional development, a certificate program designed for company officers, chief officers, and future leaders within the fire service. Fire and rescue professionals in managerial and supervisory roles are expected to be team leaders and must possess the ability to guide their staff in the achievement of department, division, or unit goals. The Fire and Rescue Management Institute included a vast range of professional development classes designed to enable participants to develop and hone the necessary skills to become a more effective and competent leader and manager. The program curriculum uses a modular approach to address managerial and leadership skills in four areas of development. That includes leadership and team building, management skills and personnel management, strategic planning, and communication skills. We thought it was important to recognize these three chief officers. They spent many hours away from home in Charlotte, participated in this program, and we're honored that you took the time and it will help to serve our community well. So we wanted to congratulate them and thank them for their efforts and their continuing education. So thank you.
Okay. We have one more recognition for Brandon Monday for completing the North Carolina Road Scholar Program.
Come on up here, Tom.
So who wants to explain what this means?
I'll be glad to do it. So, Mayor Volk, members of City Council, and public. The Road Scholar Program is sponsored by the Institute for Transportation, Research, and Education at North Carolina State University. Local government agencies in North Carolina who have the responsibility for streets and roads are entrusted to see that these streets and roads are safe and properly constructed and maintained. Employees must be trained in the basics of construction and maintenance as well as staying current in the latest practices. As budgets are always tight, cities and towns need to provide this training in an efficient and cost-effective manner. The Road Scholar and Advanced Road Scholar Program provides special training programs The Roads Scholar and Advanced Roads Scholar Program provides special training programs administered by the North Carolina Local Technical Assistance Program that allow local government agencies to assess, to access, high-quality training for the employees at a reasonable cost. The North Carolina Roads Scholar Program is the first level of recognition in the Roads Scholar Program, which provides a curriculum of training to enable workers to study road fundamentals, safety, drainage, snow and ice removal, and training management. Being a Roads Scholar helps our employees to develop professionalism and advance in their careers. And I do believe Brandon's probably the, is the first Roads Scholar we have for the city. This is another program that requires a lot of time away from the family, a lot of hard work, and we'd like to thank Brandon for his dedication to receive this honor and look forward to presenting him with the Advanced Roads Scholars in the future. Thank you.
Certificate hereby recognizes Brandon Monday, City of Hendersonville, as having successfully completed the basic education program requirements for current road maintenance and management practices as set forth by the North Carolina Local Technical Assistance Program, Institute for Transportation Research and Education, and North Carolina State University. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you.
And just for the record, Brandon is one of our new public work superintendents, so he works very hard on the streets and lots of other duties, so.
And Mary Ellen Cusson has arrived, so if you are ready to give your Environmental Sustainability Board report.
Thank y'all so much for coming back to me. I apologize for my tardiness. I got held up at the Bear Cat and Bear Kitten Rally for my incoming kindergartner. You'll be glad he's not here. So, can y'all hear me? Okay, I'm far away from this mic. So hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Mary Ellen Cusson, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Environmental Sustainability Board's Chair for FY22. And on behalf of the eight of us on the ESB, I'd like to thank you all so much for the opportunity to advise the city and the City Council and on environmental issues and to serve our community through ESB's work. I'm excited to update you on four main topics today: Earth Week, Sustainability Plan, Plastic-Free Initiative, and Pollinators. Do I have the power? I am. So Earth Day is celebrated annually on April 22nd, but one little day is not enough for Hendersonville, so we will be celebrating throughout the week. And after Easter Monday, we'll kick things off on Tuesday, April 19th, with a social media blitz highlighting the sustainable actions that Hendersonville is already taking and ways for residents to join in the fun. And then on Friday, April 22nd, we'll be hosting a community cleanup across Hendersonville, and we're encouraging any and all to join in with us, including everyone here in this room, y'all are all welcome. And you can sign up, the link's up there, but for those listening, it's bit.ly/cleanhendo, so B-I-T dot L-Y slash cleanhendo, capital C, capital H. And as Hendersonville develops its next comprehensive plan, the ESB thought it would be useful to gather its most pressing recommendations into one place. So late last year, we formed a Sustainability Plan Subcommittee comprised of some of us from the ESB as well as interested folks throughout the community. We so appreciate Councilwoman Simpson interfacing with us throughout this process as well as taking our initial draft to council. And as this slide shows, our recommendations fall into these five categories: energy, transportation, waste management, water, both quantity and quality, and land management and conservation. We then indicate who might be in charge of implementing each of these recommendations. It is still certainly in draft form. And believe it or not, our whittled down list is only 40 recommended action items. And we're in the process of further prioritizing these recommendations and gathering data to make the case for their feasibility. But even as we compile the initial draft, two overarching needs kept jumping out at us. One is that the city has taken some great first steps, and those steps would be even more meaningful and do more good for Hendersonville if we robustly enforce existing regulations. And second, we applaud Hendersonville for its commitment to environmental sustainability. But we know our hardworking city staff is already stretched thin, and if the council ends up agreeing with us that even some of these recommendations are worth implementing in the short term, we strongly recommend that the city hire a dedicated sustainability manager. And I'm happy to report that at our ESB meeting later this month, we'll have sustainability managers from other North Carolina cities joining us via Zoom to discuss aspects of their work, and they hail from Boone, Carboro, and Davidson. So we shall report back. Next, I've got a quick update on our Plastic-Free Initiative. So here you can see what greets you if you go to the top of the page at plasticfreehendo.com as well as the excellent window clings we're giving to businesses that take the pledge to work to reduce their single-use plastics in their establishments. And this work has been a result of a collaboration between the ESB and the nonprofit Mountain True. So far, we've had at least 12 businesses volunteer to reduce their single-use plastics, and they've taken the pledge, and our volunteers are standing by to help them achieve it. Big kudos to Hendersonville for leading the way. Thank you again to the city for signing the pledge, and here's a picture of Madam Volk placing the window cling on City Hall. It ran in the Times News in a story about the Working to Be Plastic-Free Initiative. Folks in Brevard have taken note and have contacted us about starting a similar program in their city. So yay, way to be leaders. Lastly, pollinators. In your handouts, I believe you have, you'll find an in-depth write-up on the front page, from the front page of the B-City USA's website featuring Hendersonville. It also includes information on our new partnership with Bullington Gardens. They have assumed the responsibility for B-City Hendersonville's education and outreach programs as well as the website, which ESB and city staff used to do. And we are so grateful for the city for contracting with Bullington Gardens in order for our B-City work to continue to flourish. Your other handout shows you our expenditures for the year. With the exception of the about $240 for the window clings I showed y'all, most have gone to our pollinator work, and the biggest expenditure being the one-time cost of the top-notch interpretive signs soon to accompany our mural and gardens. And thank you to Angela for printing them out in color, so you can see just how awesome they look. So now, from bees to butterflies, we're thrilled that Hendersonville has signed the National Wildlife Federation's Pledge to Protect Monarchs. This slide has the text of what we agreed to do, but I've highlighted or bolded the main ideas in each so you can get a sense. And a big thanks to Madam Volk for issuing her proclamation today for monarchs, and a thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Simpson for signing the monarch pledge. More on those kiddos pictured in front of her in just a moment. And if you go to NWF's site, you'll see that we are officially on the map. So additionally, for the fifth year in a row, the ESB has sponsored classrooms across Henderson County to participate in the symbolic monarch migration. The kids cheering on Councilwoman Simpson a few sides ago are a few of the many participants in this magnificent program. There's much more information about the program in the B-City write-up in your handout, but suffice it to say, it's a wonderful way for kids to connect across the continent and gain a deep understanding of the distances these amazing little insects go to survive and thrive and help our world go, keep going through pollination. So let me leave you with some hand-drawn butterflies and other lovely creatures exchanged between Hendersonville and Mexico this year. Thanks, y'all.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, but I do have a comment. I have to say that the ESB is rock stars, the whole team of them. I am so impressed with what they've been able to accomplish over the last couple of months. It really is quite a feat trying to gather all of the information and figure out what we want to do, the sustainability plan, and in addition to all of the other work that they do. So I just want to thank everybody that's on the board for their dedication and hard work for the city of Hendersonville, so thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Pass it on.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Great. Great information. All right, we do have some public hearings this evening, and we will start out with the closeout of the 2018 CDBGNR project, Gray Mill Apartments.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, in 2018, we did receive, the city received a $500,000 Community Development Block Grant, Neighborhood Revitalization Grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for the rehabilitation of the Gray Hosey Mill into 35 apartments, including seven units designated for moderate-income households, that is, individuals who are earning 80% or less of the median family income. The project is complete, believe it or not, two years, and it has stayed full. There's a waiting list for the Gray Mill Apartments, so we're proud of that. And to close out that grant project, we were required by Department of Commerce to hold a closing public hearing to receive comment from the public.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions first? No? All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the closeout of this CDBG grant? Anyone who would like to comment? Is there anyone seeking recognition online?
Lynn Williams, raise your hand.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Lynn Williams, Chabik Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you to the city and everyone involved in saving this historic building, and I wanted to also take a moment to honor Mr. Steve, Councilmember Steve Kerker, because I know this was a huge project for him, and he was pivotal in that, so I just wanted to thank him as well.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, we will close this public hearing, and that's all we need to do with that.
No action, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is a standard rezoning for Brooklyn Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Good to see you. As you mentioned, this rezoning is for a parcel at the corner of Brooklyn Avenue and Old Spartanburg Road. The parcel is currently split-zoned. It has, a portion of it is Zone C-3, and another portion of it is Zone R-15. And so the proposal is to zone the entire parcel to C-3, and so all of the uses that are currently permitted within C-3 would now be permitted under that if this is approved. The future land use designation is Neighborhood Activity Center, and it's in an activity node, and I'll provide some more information on that shortly. This area is, has a mix of uses and a mix of zoning. You have Spartanburg Highway nearby, just half a block away from the subject property, and there are several intense uses, commercial uses, and solid C-3 district along Spartanburg Highway. And then, as it moves towards Old Spartanburg Road, you have a transition to an R-15 district, which is very solid on the east side of Old Spartanburg Road. I will note that Old Spartanburg Road and Brooklyn Road are both considered, classified as minor thoroughfares in our comprehensive plan. So by rezoning, and the standard rezoning, you're going from all the uses that are permitted under one district and considering whether to then permit all the uses in the proposed district. And what I've outlined here are, all the similarities are colored in green, and there are, there are some uses that have, that are connected, that have some similarity, but there is also some distinction. For instance, the adult care and childcare under R-15 are adult care and childcare homes for six or fewer individuals, and adult care and childcare under C-3 are for six or more individuals. So slightly more, you know, intense type of use, but both relating to adult care and childcare. Also, minor PRDs are permitted in both, but under R-15, the density is 3.75 units per acre, and under C-3, it would be 8.5 units per acre. The major difference is found on this slide where it outlines the, all of the commercial uses and more intense uses that are permitted under C-3, along with the special uses under C-3 that would be permitted if the rezoning is approved. Similarly, under the dimensional standards, you see smaller lot size under the C-3 than what is permitted. So along with those uses, you have some dimensional standards that are different. Taking a look at the site, there is some outdoor storage and equipment storage on the site. Upper left is standing, there's Edith Drive, which is at the far western edge of the property. This upper-left picture is looking back towards Old Spartanburg Road. Upper-right picture is standing on Edith Drive, looking towards Brooklyn Drive. And the bottom-left is kind of center of the site, looking at the corner. Just on that intersection, just on the other side of those trees would be the intersection of Brooklyn Road and Old Spartanburg Road. And on the bottom-right, you're in the center of the site, facing back west, and obviously this is at sunset, facing back towards Edith Drive and Spartanburg Highway. Taking a look at the future land use map, as I mentioned previously, this parcel is in the Neighborhood Activity Center, is also right at the edge of an area that transitions to high-intensity neighborhood. There's a very clear demarcation, which follows Old Spartanburg Road, and it's found within an activity node, which is, which are centered around major intersections along our corridors. Taking a look at the future, the comprehensive plan consistency, the future land use designation of Neighborhood Activity Center does fit with C-3 in terms of locations and uses. However, as you're familiar, the comprehensive plan, future land use designations also come with designs, design guidelines, and C-3 does not have design standards, that zoning district does not have design standards, and so there's no way to ensure those outcomes that are promoted through the comprehensive plan. The, it is a priority infill site, and we have several goals and strategies related to infill and compatible infill. There, it is an urbanized area, there's not significant impact from a natural environmental resources perspective. The only other chapters that may have some relevance, this will come up later, is there is, is urban area, there is water and sewer, city facilities available, and it, as I mentioned previously, is at the corner of two minor thoroughfares. So we take the next step in following through our six general rezoning standards, the criteria that these rezonings are weighted against, this is somewhat covered already, but the R-15 and C-3 that are present in this area, there is, there are districts, there are parcels which stretch from Spartanburg Highway across Old Spartanburg Road that have that commercial designation, and then there are some, R-15 mixed in there as well. However, this is at an intersection with the minor thoroughfares and in an activity node, which suggests that it would be appropriate for the C-3 zoning. There have been other rezonings and other development in this area. There's some C-4 that was recently rezoned for the fire station at the corner of Shepherd Street and Old Spartanburg. There's a car wash currently under development along Shepherd Street as well. That's part of a larger parcel that also extends from Spartanburg Highway to Old Spartanburg The, this would increase the intensity of the development that is, from both a residential and commercial standpoint, on this parcel. And as I mentioned, water and sewer is available, but a request has not yet been made. The two minor thoroughfares are NC DOT streets. There is no 100-year floodplain on this property. The really, the only vegetation is the arrovate trees that line the edge of the property. This went to the planning board, and they had the following, offered the following comprehensive plan consistency statement, that the Neighborhood Activity Center designation calls for neighborhood retail sales and services as a primary recommended land use, and office, multifamily, and other similar uses as secondary recommended land uses at locations which align with this particular future land use designation. They went on to state the, to provide a reasonableness statement that is They went on to state the, to provide a reasonableness statement that is provided there. The petition would be an extension of the existing C3 zoning district and eliminate the split zoning on the subject parcel. The petition allows for increased intensity of uses at the intersection of two minor thoroughfares. The petition would align with the parcels proximate to the subject property, which are zoned C3 and located between Old Spartanburg Road and Spartanburg Highway. And lastly, the petition creates the opportunity for infill development at a greater density and intensity. They made this recommendation at their March 14th board meeting last month, and the motion carried five to one. And with that, I'll offer up any questions, your ma'am.
Any questions? Nope? Okay. Would the applicant like to say anything at this point?
Can you say your owner?
Yes. Would you like to say anything?
Oh.
If you could just give your name and address, please.
Mark Pace. I live at 171 Terrace Mountain Drive in Laurel Park. My family's owned that for, since the 50s, and it's always, it was behind my father's old hardware store that was on the highway, and it's been sitting vacant, had this piece of R15 on the back, and I have not been able to make any plans or think of, brainstorm on it without knowing how much I was able to work with, so I'm looking to get it to C3. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this rezoning? Anyone who would like to comment on the rezoning? Is there anyone online who would like to comment on the rezoning?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Give it another couple of seconds, in case. All right. In case, we will close that public hearing. Counsel, comments, questions, or a motion?
I'll make this motion. Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, pin 9578422392, from R15 medium density residential and C3 highway business to C3 highway business based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville 2030 Comprehensive Plan based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the Neighborhood Activity Center designation calls for neighborhood retail sales and services as a primary recommended land use, and office, multifamily, and other similar uses as secondary recommended land uses at locations which align with those listed under LU 8.1. Number two, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because, one, the petition would be an extension of the existing C3 zoning district and eliminate the split zoning of the subject parcel. Two, the petition allows for increased intensity of uses at the intersection of two minor thoroughfares. Three, the petition would align with the parcels proximate to the subject property, which are zoned C3 and located between Old Spartanburg Road and Spartanburg Highway. And four, the petition creates the opportunity for infill development at a greater density and intensity.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. And we will call the roll. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So the ayes have it, the motion passes, and that zoning change has been approved. Our next public hearing is also a rezoning. This is a conditional zoning for Schroeder Honda expansion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This is a conditional rezoning application for the Schroeder Honda expansion. The property is located at 220 Machell Drive. The existing zoning is C3 highway business. The property owner is requesting to be rezoned to C3, CZD, or conditional zoning district. The property is a little bit over four acres. They are proposing automobile sales and service, offices, business, professional, and public, and also retail stores as their requested uses. The project details, there's a new two-story, 32,985 square foot expansion. They are retaining the existing buildings on site, and they are proposing for an overall product of 53,074 square feet, which is why they are required to go through the CZD process, is because they are exceeding that 50,000 square foot threshold. And their future land use designation is Regional Activity Center. Neighborhood compatibility was held for this meeting as required by the zoning ordinance for all CZDs. The date of that meeting was January 3rd, 2022. One person attended virtually. Questions from the, that meeting revolved around the need for the rezoning, the height of the new building, and also if there was any requirements for dark sky lighting on the site. Some concerns were about the appearance of the building, the facade, the existing conditions of the road, and future improvements to the road if there were any, going to come down the pipe. Support, the commenter did state that this will be an asset to the area with an updated facility, but did, he did have several questions. The subject property is entirely budded by C3 zone parcels, and there's a mix of uses in this area. The surrounding area is zoned C3 highway business due to its proximity to Four Seasons Boulevard. The area to the south, the subject property is designated as R15, medium density residential, and contains a summer camp for children. As you can see, there's also some residential, commercial transition in this area, and a PRD and some PCD off to the west and northwest. The top left photo, which you really can't see in the room, is the existing building that operates as Schroeder Honda. The building on the top right, or the picture on the top right, is of some vacant land that will be redeveloped if approved. Bottom left is an existing warehouse, metal warehouse building at the rear of the property that will be retained. And bottom right is a picture of the driveway looking back towards the motel and the Starbucks Subject property is designated as Regional Activity Center on the 2030 Comprehensive Plan's future land use map. All parcels abutting this parcel are also designated as Regional Activity Center. The area to the south is designated as Business Center, now, due to the designation, due to this, due to these parcels being large in size and also fronting on I-26. All parcels in this area have a high intensity future land use designation, whether it be for residential, commercial, or industrial uses. And as you can see, it's close to an activity node, but not quite in those boundaries of being included. The goal of the, or the Regional Activity Center is to meet the large-scale retail needs of Hendersonville residents while encouraging mixed-use walkable design through redevelopment and infill projects. The community and regional activities, community and regional retail sales and services are primary recommended land uses under this designation. For the land use section, the land development chapter of the comprehensive plan designates this parcel as an infill, priority infill development area. Of course, the population and housing section of the comprehensive plan does not necessarily apply to this project. Some natural and environmental resource things that go along with this property, there are currently no trees on the site that are 12 inches in diameter, breast height. There are no environmentally sensitive areas such as streams or floodplains on the property. The county GIS does show some steep slopes on the property, but it does appear that the lot has been graded in the past, so that may no longer be the case. Cultural and historical resources, this property is not within a historic district. Community facilities will not be greatly impacted by this development since this business is already in operation on this site. The development is proposed to disturb more than an acre, so they will be required to install stormwater measures as far as water resources are concerned. And for transportation and circulation, the site will be accessed by an NC DOT street. For compatibility, it is close proximity to a major commercial corridor of Four Seasons Boulevard and visible from the I-26 east on-ramp. The proposed use and business is already in operation at this location. Change conditions, the project that is being proposed would be allowed by ride under the current zoning if it had not involved development and redevelopment of 50,000 square feet floor area. Public interest, Schroeder Honda is one of the few motorcycle retailers in Henderson County. This expansion would allow them to offer a wider range of retail and service selection. Public facilities, the current use of the property would continue as it does today. Effects on the natural environment, like I mentioned earlier, appears that it has been graded, and also that they're disturbing more than an acre, so they are required to do a city-approved stormwater control measure. Let's see. The planning board recommended, or, yeah, recommended the comprehensive plan consistency statement shown on your screen. They found that the petition is consistent with the comprehensive plan, since the Regional Activity Center designation calls for community and retail, regional retail sales and services as a primary recommended land use, and offices as a secondary recommended land use under, under strategy LU 9 dot, 9 dot 2 and 9 dot 3. The planning board found the petition reasonable because the development is an expansion of an existing use/business in this area. Subject property is classified as a priority infill area, and a portion of the property is identified as a development opportunity. Site plan shows a two-story, 32,985 square foot expansion on the current Schroeder Honda site. This expansion would include office space for, or would include office and sales space. The one-story, 10,400 square foot building that Schroeder Honda currently uses would remain as a warehouse and service area, as well as the existing one-story, 9,689 square foot metal building at the rear of the property would remain as well, in total 53,074 square The site plan accompanying this request meets the standards of the zoning ordinance. The community development department did recommend one condition, which is make the western driveway an entrance only due to existing topography and possible site distance issues. This condition was a result of citizen concern during the neighborhood compatibility meeting and from staff site visits. DOT showed support for this request, but did not want to give a definitive answer without more information. Developer has not agreed to this condition. The condition is not included on the site plan or the motion. If it were to be included, you would have to include in your motion, and would have to be agreed upon by the developer. I will also note that the access for this development is off an NC DOT road, and they would have the final say on NC driveway permit, and they would have to go, the developer would have to go through that process during the final site plan if approved. So they would be still reviewed by NC DOT for any site distance issues. The tree board made the following recommendation at their January 26 meeting. Recommended natural vegetation be retained on a slope outside of the disturbance, and appropriate native grasses and plants be planted beyond the imperable, imperable, imperable parking surface, and down to and around the retaining pond. Recommended replanting of trees, shrubs, grasses, and plants in the slope area to be disturbed just north of the retaining pond. This would provide a buffer and filter as well as decreased erosion and water runoff, and provide a transition for future cover. No grasses, no turf grasses to be used. As you'll see, the developer has agreed to both of those. Those are on the site plan and the motion, so those don't have to be mentioned. The developer also proposed their own condition, which is to reduce the required off-street parking from 118 spaces to 30 parking spaces, and I think they're ready to discuss that reasoning behind that condition. The planning board took this matter up at their March 14 meeting. They recommended six to nothing to recommend approval. They also recommended approval with the two tree board conditions and the developer proposed condition. They also added their own condition, which was, the planning board was in favor of the western access being entry-only on the driveway, and they understood that developer will have to work with NC DOT. I will note, that one was not agreed upon by the developer either, so they would have to agree to that one as well for it to actually become a condition. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the developer's engineer is online, and I think maybe, yeah, the applicant is also in person if you have any questions for them. Yes, sir?
Go ahead.
If you were to go back two slides, one more, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right. So I'm just asking, there's a discussion here on what I have about no turf grasses to be used. Is that worked into what you have there?
Yeah, so the no turf-
Well, mine has a number three, and I'm just making sure-
Yes, that was a formatting issue.
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay. We're good. And they agreed to that?
Yes. And it's on the site plan.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What exactly is a Regional Activity Center?
So Regional Activity Center is a future land use designation. It is one of our most intense future land use designations. It is pretty much your highly commercial future land use designation, where you see your Walmarts, your highway businesses, your fast food restaurants. That's the kind of uses that you would usually see in a Regional Activity Center.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If the applicant or representative would like to comment, you can do that now. I think you said someone was online.
Will McBrayer is the engineer on the proper, or project. I'm not sure if he would want to speak. There is, they do have a floor-
He doesn't have to, but just if he would like to make any comments.
Okay.
See, seeking recognition?
I asked him to unmute. I've not seen him unmute.
Okay. All right.
I think he's here now.
Hey, this is Will McBrayer with Udom Engineering. If anybody has any questions, I am here to answer.
Okay. Didn't know if you wanted to add anything to the presentation or not.
Not at this time. Thank you very much, though.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
We will open that public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this conditional zoning district? Anyone like to comment here present? Is there anyone online who would like to comment?
Madam Mayor, Ken Fitch has raised his hand.
Okay. If he would like to go ahead.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. I support the rezoning to facilitate the expansion and upgrade of this unique commercial facility. However, I also support the proposed condition that the western driveway be entry-only, as it is located near the bend in the road with visibility issues. Further, some drivers on this road may be visitors and travelers unfamiliar with this area or this road, perhaps in some situation negotiating travel to the GPS and not expecting the sudden appearance of a motorcycle in the roadway. This would be a minor but important adjustment to the site plan that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Okay. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
Just one comment.
Yes.
Based upon the presentation, it does appear to me that if, if DOT thinks that it's unsafe without having that, they will enforce that on them, I believe. Am I correct in that observation? Is that your understanding?
That was my understanding. Is that right?
If DOT thinks that they need to in fact have that one-way-in entrance there, they will enforce, they will make them do that.
Correct. Yeah. So DOT has a lot more power in this scenario.
Yeah.
Because they will, since it is a DOT street, they will have to go through the DOT driveway permitting process, and if DOT requires that that be a entrance only due to site distance issues and topography, then they can require that.
And the developer won't have a choice. They'll have to do it.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, someone would like to? If not, someone would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm new city council adopt of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pin 9579-45-0902 from C3 Highway Business to C3 CZD Highway Business Conditional Zoning District based on the site plan submitted by the applicant dated 3/8 of 2022 and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The developer shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of permitted uses and applicable conditions as presented on the site plan. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include all the conditions from the tree board and the planning board minus the, the road entrance. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville 2030 Comprehensive Plan based on the information from the staff analysis because the Regional Activity Center designation calls for community and regional retail sales and services as a primary recommended land use and offices as a secondary recommended land use strategy under LU nine dash two, or nine dot two and nine dot three. We find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing and because the development is in an expansion of an existing business in the area, the subject property is classified as a priority infill on map eight dot three A and a portion of the property is identified as a development opportunity on map eight dot two B.
Okay, thank you. I have one question, does, does this motion include the request for reduction in parking? Or do we have to add that?
Yes, ma'am, so the way it's written, we get the developer to agree to whatever conditions they will agree to and put those on the site plan prior to the meeting, so that condition was put on the site plan, the way it's worded, it is included.
Okay, thank you, because 100 and some parking spaces did not make sense. All right, thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, those in favor of this conditional zoning district, we will go down the list. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Rontree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. So the ayes have it, the motion carries and can move forward with that. And our last public hearing is another conditional zoning district, this is for Apple Ridge.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member city council once again. I'll skip right to this. So this is a conditional zoning district application, it's for a housing development at a property that's currently five, or 524 East Prince Road, but as you see, it is a large parcel. The parcel is currently zoned R15 medium-density residential. The applicants are proposing to be rezoned to planned residential development, conditional zoning district. The parcel is a little bit, are all right under 17 acres. They're proposing multifamily and single-family uses on this parcel, 60 multifamily units, 20 single-family lots, and the future land use designation is business center. So just like the last application, this application also had a neighborhood, or compatibility meeting held on January 3, 2022. There was 10 people in attendance in person and two virtual. The questions raised were about the price of the units and if they were quote-unquote affordable, single-family homes, the square footage of those, and if there would be a homeowners association for those single-family lots. There was concerns about traffic safety, impacts on the environment, and the density proposed. One commenter stated that the city desperately needs affordable housing, but stated that the project needs to be done right. Subject property is surrounded by a variety of zoning classifications and uses. The uses range from single-family residential to many warehouses and public facilities. Parcels to the southeast are zoned Henderson County R1. This area is comprised of the Lakeview Estates neighborhood. Parcels to the west are primarily, primarily contain commercial uses and zoning classifications. This area also contains the City of Hendersonville Fire Station Number Two. Parcels to the north are zoned commercial and residential. This area contains high-density residential uses such as Claystone manufactured housing development and the Sugarloaf and Sugar Hill Apartments. These are some pictures of the site. As you can see on the top left, that is a view of the parcel looking towards East Prince Road. If you really look in the distance, you'll see where the future connection to East Prince would be from this development if approved. The picture on the top right is an existing buffer, basically the typical buffer that you would see between this parcel and the Lakeview Estates neighborhood. The picture on the bottom left is of where the multifamily buildings will likely be in that area, and as you can see, it overlooks the existing mini-storage facility adjacent to this property, and the bottom right shows the blue, one of the blue line streams that run through this property. The site is designated as business center due to its large size and its proximity to I-26. Parcels to the east, east and south are designated as medium-intensity neighborhood. Parcels to the north are designated as high-intensity neighborhood. Parcels to the northwest are designated as regional activity center, and this reflects the commercial node around the I-26 interchange with US 64 slash Chimney Rock Road. The goal of the business center is to create an employment corridor along I-26 that supports the growth of Hendersonville as a business destination, create a campus-like mixed-use environment that includes office, research, and low-impact industrial uses as well as supportive retail amenities. Multifamily residential is a secondary recommended land use under this designation. The site plan also shows an easement for a future greenway between the multifamily and single-family neighborhoods, which follows the guidelines for the business center, which states encouragement of pedestrian connections to multi-use paths between uses. For the land use category, this, the land use, the land development chapter of the comprehensive plan designates this parcel as a priority growth area. Population and housing, some chapters or some strategies and goals that relate to this project are the encouragement of wide range of housing types and price points in order to meet the diverse and evolving needs of current and future residents, matching housing supply with local workforce and promote diverse neighborhoods, and also the encouragement provision of affordable housing units in new developments. Require encouragement, require at least 10% of units to be sold in new developments to be affordable to people making up to 80% AMI. The natural resource and environmental section, protect lands adjacent to streams to protect water quality, reduce erosion, and protect wildlife habitat, and also enable and encourage low-development practices in stormwater management. Community facilities, encourage community open space or play areas in new developments and redevelopment in residential neighborhoods. The property is not located in a historic district, so the first criteria is not really applicable. Water resources, enable and encourage low-impact stormwater management practices, and also for transportation, improve roadways is needed to implement the land use vision and meet level of service requirements. Also says improve and widen existing roadways as indicated on one of the maps in the comprehensive plan, and that map does include Sugarloaf Road. Compatibility, single-family residential and multifamily residential are both found near the proposed project area. Change conditions, the proposed development provides two different forms of affordable housing to meet different needs of the city of Hendersonville. Public interest, the addition of 20 single-family homes and 60 apartment units will fill a need for additional housing stock in Hendersonville. Public facilities, they will be constructing a street that meets the city of Hendersonville requirements for a public street, and the water and sewer department has received an availability request as indicated that there are adequate facilities in the area to serve this development. Effects on the natural environment, the site is currently a greenfield area. New development reflects a significant increase in impervious surfaces. The site plan shows preservation of mature trees along the blue line stream. The site plan also shows preservation of the 50-foot stream buffer, or 30-foot stream buffer, 20-foot transitional area. The site currently has 147 trees, 12 inches or greater in diameter. The developer is proposing to remove 47 and retain 100 of those trees. The applicant is also proposing to plant 65 new trees. The planning board recommended the comprehensive plan consistency statement shown on the screen. They found that the petition is consistent with the comprehensive plans since the business center designation calls for multifamily as a secondary recommended land use and the proposed site plan aligns with some of the development guidelines under strategy LU 13 dot four. The planning board found the petition is reasonable because the development addresses the need for affordable housing with two different housing types. The addition of multifamily and single-family residential addresses an ongoing supply need and is in keeping with the surrounding land uses. The topography, the presence of a blue line stream, and the adjacent single-family neighborhood makes the rear of the subject property more conducive for single-family development. So the site plan, this is overall layout of the site plan, I'm going to zoom in on different key points of the site plan so you can see it better, but this development consists of 80 dwelling units on 16.90 acres, which comes out to be a density of 4.73 units per acre. The site plan shows their main access off of Sugarloaf Road. The new road shown will be used to access both the single-family and multifamily units and will be constructed to public street standards. The site plan shows three multifamily structures and a clubhouse. This includes 33-bedroom units, 31 and two-bedroom units. The building will have a max height of 35 feet. They will, they were required to have 105 parking spaces, they are providing 112, and you will also see the blue line stream at the, or the south of this site plan. The site plan also shows 20 single-family lots ranging in size from 0.16 acres to 0.31 acres. The site plan also shows access off East Prince Road, which is a DOT-maintained street, or DOT-maintained road. The site also shows a, one, shows one street to be a cul-de-sac road. The blue line stream along the single-family portion of the property is also shown. The city's stream buffer protection standards are in place for the streams on this property. The site plan accompanying this request meets the standards of the zoning ordinance. Stormwater administrator did recommend one condition, which is to require that at least one stormwater control measure be a stormwater wetland to mitigate the impacts to existing wetlands on the site. The developer did not agree to this condition, but they did propose a counter, which stated make one stormwater control measure a storm, make one stormwater, stormwater control measure a stormwater wetland if the soil conditions allow for a stormwater wetland. This has been, or this would be, have to be determined during final site, final site design or final site plan. Stormwater administrator advised that he is comfortable with this approach and that The tree board made the following recommendation at their February 15 meeting. The first two recommending conditions revolve around preserving as many mature trees as possible and how to protect those trees during construction with call-outs to the zoning ordinance and tree credit preservation. Both of these conditions have been agreed to by the developer and are included on the site plan. The second two conditions revolve around enhancing the stream buffer slash corridor with additional plantings and also removing invasive plant species from around the property. The developer, developer did not agree to these conditions, and I believe they are ready to speak about that during their presentation, and those are of course not included on the site plan. The planning board reviewed this project at their March 14 meeting, they recommended six oh to approve this petition. They recommended approval with the two agreed-upon tree board conditions and the developer-proposed counter to the stormwater condition. They also added a recommended, they also recommended their own condition, which was that a minimum of 50% of the housing of each phase will meet the need of 80% or less AMI or area medium income. The developer did agree to this condition. The planning board's reasoning for this condition is that if for some reason the Housing Assistance Corporation doesn't get the tax credits or does not develop this property, they want to ensure that whoever does use these entitlements, if anyone does, that they want to ensure that some level of the development will be affordable housing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In the, the wetland proposal, if we were to include that in the motion, how would, how would you word that, the agreed-upon wetland proposal, like in the part here where it says, "Conditions present," or is that second one on the site plan?
So the developer-proposed counter is already on the site-
So that is on the site?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay, that answers my question, okay.
Any other questions?
So then the only things, I know we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but the other thing, the only things we would have to list in this number two is if we were adding anything tonight in this meeting.
Correct, if you wanted to add any of your own conditions, or if you wanted to speak to the developer about adding conditions they previously not agreed to-
Yeah.
-those would be the ones you would have to add in the motion.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
You might have a presentation? Okay, thank you. Good evening, nice to see you all again. I'm Ashleigh McCoy, the executive director for the Housing Assistance Corporation. We are excited to present to you tonight our Apple Ridge development project. As you know, the Housing Assistance Corporation is a local nonprofit here in Henderson County, and our mission is to provide safe and affordable housing to persons of limited income here and our surrounding areas. For the last 40, 34 years, we have served this area through our various programs by constructing 200 single-family homes, 370 apartment units, and completing an average of 250 repairs every year. As Tyler mentioned, our Apple Ridge development consists of 60 multifamily units and 20 single-family units. The multifamily portion has been submitted as a tax credit application to North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and as he said, it consists of three buildings with a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. The proposed multifamily development, or the whole development really, is 100% affordable. The rents for the multifamily section are proposed to be between $422 a month and $1,172, that also includes utilities in that number. This project will serve persons 60% AMI and below, and the new, the single-family units are, will also be new construction, and those are for clients 80% AMI and below. These clients participate in our self-help or our new homes program, and they receive a USDA 502 direct loan and build their, their homes with our team. In the self-help program, clients participate in the build of their home, so they work about 10 hours a week constructing that and really gaining, and also gaining sweat equity in the process. In the new homes program, the clients do not have that sweat equity, sweat equity component, our team just constructs at an affordable rate for them. The proposed 20 homes in the Apple Ridge development are proposed to be 1,100 to 1,400 square feet depending on the bedroom size and bedroom count and bathroom count, so that might be three bedrooms, two baths, four bedrooms, two baths. Right now, our average cost for our homes to construct is $229,000, and that includes the lot cost. As we know, affordable housing is very needed in our community, according to the most recent Bowen study completed for this area, the median list price for a home in Henderson County is $449,000, an availability rate of less than 1%. Our cost burden of population, those paying more than the recommended 30%, defined by HUD, have increased over the last several years. Currently, 57.6% of renters and 25.4% of homeowners are considered cost burden. If we shift our look into what the apartments look like, the overall vacancy rate for any apartment unit in Henderson County is .2%, and the average cost for those units range from $668 for a studio apartment up to $1,415 for a three-bedroom unit. We feel that the Apple Ridge development will help address the critical need by diversifying our housing stock here- our housing stock here in Henderson County. So we just wanted to provide you with a couple pictures of past developments we've done, we have done. On the top left-hand corner here is the most recent apartment complex, Oklahua Village off North Main Street. This is also a tax credit development project. The upper right-hand picture and the lower left-hand picture are homes in our Hillcrest Development out in Edneyville. And the bottom right-hand picture is our Sugar Hill Development, which is right across the street from this proposed project. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Will Bowie now to answer, talk a little bit more.
Thank you, Ashlyn. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Will Bowie with WGLA Engineering, working with Housing Assistance Corporation in preparation of the preliminary site plan, and glad to be here with you all this evening. Just to have a couple of points that I wanted to make for you about the site plan and be able to answer any questions for you. Tyler's described the project very well. Approximately 16.9 acres. The apartments you can see in the middle of the screen here are roughly on about 6.25 acres. The single-family to the south is located on about 10.67 acres. One of the key points of this particular development is that we worked very hard with Housing Assistance Corp. to preserve the stream buffer areas. And you can see those in light green throughout the development going north-south, and then between the existing AAA storage, and then north of the proposed apartments. So preservation of open space and preservation of those stream corridors was very important to Housing Assistance as we looked at the site plan. We heard a number of comments from our neighbors, and we tried to incorporate those where we could. I'm going to flip on to the next screen and be able to give you a few points there. One of the keys that we heard from neighbors was preservation of buffer. We heard from Lakeview Estates, located here, and one of the things that we did was we preserved open space areas that would allow us to keep existing vegetation in place. We also were able to take advantage of the PRD setbacks, and so the lots that are located along that buffer have a very deep rear setback. And so that would allow for the preservation of vegetation along those areas. We also heard from our neighbor to the south here, there were concerns about the proposed wastewater pump station that would be located on that end. We shifted that pump station as far north as we could, so we were able to allow about 100-foot buffer in that case between the property line and the proposed pump station. This is a rendering, unfortunately, it's not in color, but this is a rendering of the proposed apartment buildings. This, again, is very similar to the Oklahua Village. I'm sure you all are familiar with that and have seen that. And again, this is just a photograph of a representative home that you would expect to see on this project if you all were to approve the project. Just in summary, we think this is a great opportunity to provide 80 permanently affordable units. We've worked very hard with the developer and the landowner for preservation of the stream corridors and open space. We think that's key. Preservation of trees and vegetation along our property boundaries and buffers will be key for our neighbors. Couple of other points that we did want to make related to the proposed conditions. The tree board had recommended four conditions, and we, as the development team, agreed to the first two conditions. The third and fourth conditions were related to additional plantings along the stream corridors and removal of invasive species. There was also talk about setting a conservation easement in place. Housing Assistance met with Conservin' Carolina. They actually were out on the site and reviewed those conditions. I think the quote was, "The cost to do that would be in hundreds of thousands of dollars. It would not be, it's not something that simply volunteers could come in and do." So the preservation of the stream corridors, the enhancement of the stream corridors and plantings is a goal. The idea of a conservation easement is a goal, but we would ask you that that not be a condition that would add additional cost to the project at this time and allow Housing Assistance to work on that over the course of time and over the course of the project. And then I believe you wanted to maybe talk about the affordability piece?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like, while Housing Assistance, of course, is going to develop affordable units 100%, that is our mission, I would like the council to consider amending that proposed condition by Planning Board. Something was to happen, hopefully not, and we do not get the tax credit award or this project is not feasible at some point. The property owner has been really willing to work with us, and I would hate to see that condition be put on him for really no reason. So if you would just consider that, we're here to serve our mission. We have no problems with that being a condition on us. Just want to be respectful to him since he's been so helpful to us. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? No? Questions from the board here? All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
Okay, we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this conditional zoning district, Apple Ridge?
Yes.
If you would come forward and give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Hi, Annette Banks, 520 East Prince Road, just adjacent to the, to the south end, I believe. Two questions. The pump house that has been moved, can I find out how, what the footage is away from the property line?
I think you already answered that.
Said it was moved up. I didn't know.
It's at 100 feet.
100 feet. And the other thing, in the development of this, that is sloped. Would that change? Will there be any areas that will be flattened out? And I ask because of the runoff that goes into the creek.
Madam Mayor, if I may, certainly where the apartments would be located, those areas
would be graded. However, the single-family homes, as is the custom with Housing Assistance, they do not mass grade their lots. Certainly, we would grade for the roadways, but the homesites and the lots would not be graded. So that topography would not change. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak regarding this conditional zoning? Anyone present? Is there anyone online seeking recognition to speak?
Madam Mayor, Ken Fitch and Lynn Williams have raised their hands.
Okay.
Mr. Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Okay.
It's Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. This important project, in its design, its process of implementation, and in its response to neighbors and the public, has sought to achieve a level of compatibility not often experienced with major developments. Unlike the massive clearcutting that characterizes many projects, this project has been designed to be compatible with the environment in which it is located, to respect rather than ignore the existence of blue-line streams within its boundaries with their forested stream bank corridors, and also to work to preserve existing buffering trees on its boundaries. Most notably, it has implemented amendments and adjustments to the site plan in response to concerns and comments from the neighbors and the public. And indeed, should more issues of concern be presented tonight or in the future, the applicants would probably seek to address them during the ongoing process. Issue after issue has been addressed. As we heard before, the neighbor concern with the location of the sewer line and pump station has spurred its relocation on the site plan to another, more compatible location. A concern with the boundary interface at the southwest corner of the site has generated the plan for an earthen berm buffer. The sidewalks have been realigned to achieve a fluid walkway with minimal interior crosswalks, also with upgrade of pedestrian access to Sugarloaf Road and a proposed sidewalk connection to points north. A concern regarding buffering the apartment complex from property to the east precipitated discussion and understanding with the tree board for establishing an upgraded tree buffering element once grading and infrastructure is in place. Concern for maintaining the existing tree buffer with the adjacent neighborhood generated the plans for adjusting the individual single-family home deployment to preserve existing trees. Now, while that might seem blasphemous in our era of sprawl-inducing planning, the reality is that for centuries, folks have moved here to live in the woods or in proximity with the natural environment. And indeed, some of our most exclusive local developments are characterized by their forested character. So the adjustments to preserve the environmental character of the site are most welcome. The concern that traffic from this project would exacerbate the situation with the extremely hazardous intersection at the neighboring development spurred an initiative to partner with the neighboring entities and NC DOT to seek an upgrade to that intersection for safety improvement. The process thus far has been diligent in its interaction throughout, and one must commend Housing Assistance for their outreach and Mr. Bowie for what has been some of his finest work. Moving forward, it is clear that the goal here is to create a neighborhood and a sense of community rather than an economic opportunity. Fortunately, there's something very important to note, especially in the times in which we find ourselves. And at first, this may seem to be a sidebar, but it is central to the larger purposes at this site. The property for this proposed neighborhood is owned by Tommy Thompson and his wife. Tommy Thompson, a longtime public servant, the county commissioner for many years, and one of his important visionary civic accomplishments with lasting impact, especially now, was his proposal for the county to fund a nurse in every school. Now, this was not met with much enthusiasm at the time, given the budgetary and financial requirement, but Mr. Thompson pressed forward with a plan to fund two additional nurses for the school system every year, thus providing a critical framework so that when the pandemic arrived, with all its disruption, fear, and uncertainty, it took only a shift of a few personnel from the Health Department to realize Mr. Thompson's vision for a nurse in every school that would prove essential in this crisis that has had such profound impact on children, families, and the larger community. So therefore, it is most appropriate that the Thompson property would serve a neighborhood for families whose children, when they walked up the hills to the bus stop, would travel to a school where they would find care in a time of need, which is an extension of community. The notion of community is of important value for many of us, and that value of community is inherent and would thrive in the plan before you tonight. So I salute Housing Assistance, Mr. Bowie, and Mr. Thompson for their visionary civic commitment in a time of need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Ms. Williams?
Lynn Williams, Chabik Avenue. Thank you for your time. I had a couple comments on this. One was that it appears as though there is wildlife corridor through the property, and so every protection for animal habitats and trees is very important. The second point was about the tree board and serious consideration for points three and four, and if they won't be required as a condition, to please consider supporting the tree board through the Neighborhoods Program and perhaps some helping to provide funding for additional tree plantings and assistance. And I would love to participate in that program as well. So if you need help organizing, I'll be more than happy to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there anyone else seeking recognition? No? Is there anyone else present who wishes to comment? Okay. Now, we'll close that public hearing. Council, discussion, a motion?
I just would like to follow up with the request by Housing Assistance that we remove the requirement of 50% of the housing be affordable housing or 80% or less of AMI. So we remove that requirement, because I believe it's on here.
We could put that under number two, right? Instead of saying include, we could say exclude.
I don't know exactly how to do it, but somehow.
Yeah. So if you wanted to remove that condition, I believe under number two, it kind of gives you amendments, you could throw that as an amendment in the motion itself, and that would take that kind of off the table.
So the amendment would be, well, first of all, we need to agree to it, but the amendment would be that we remove the 50% of housing. Each phase will meet the need of 80% or less AMI.
Yeah, I would say remove the condition and then name that condition.
Okay. I propose that we do that.
Okay. Do you like to, is there some other, any other comments?
I think, I think Jen wants to talk.
I would just like to see if it's possible and what the council thinks about us sending a letter of support to this project to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. I understand their QAD is kind of strict and, you know, to qualify for these grant programs, but is it possible that we send a letter of support from the council for this project since we are desperately in need of an affordable housing project like this?
We have done that before for other tax credit projects, and I'm sure we can do Anything else?
I would just like to add that there will be some participation with the Neighborhood Woods Project through the Hendersonville Tree Board.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Smith, would you like to make that motion, including your amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move City Council adopted ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, PIN 9579740966, from R15 Medium Density Residential to PRD CZD Planned Residential Development Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan submitted by the applicant dated 3/25/22 and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. Number one, the development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of permitted uses and applicable conditions as presented on the site plan. Number two, permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to exclude the requirement that a minimum of 50% of the housing of each phase will meet the need of 80% or less area median income. Number three, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville's 2030 Comprehensive Plan, based on information from the staff analysis, and because the Business Center designation calls for multifamily as a secondary recommended land use, and the proposed site plan aligns with some of the development guidelines under Strategy LU-13.4. And number four, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because, one, the development addresses the need for affordable housing with two different housing types; two, the addition of multifamily and single-family residential addresses, oh, sorry, family residential, addresses an ongoing supply need and is in keeping with the surrounding land uses; and three, the topography, the presence of a blue-line stream in the adjacent single-family neighborhood makes the rear of the subject property more conducive for single-family development.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? We will vote. Mr. Smith?
Absolutely. Aye.
Ms. Ensley?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we certainly hope this will come to fruition. And... And I would like to request staff to draft a letter of support and put it on our consent agenda for next month. So we will have it. Okay?
And I'll follow up what Councilmember Hensley said. If we need to drive to Raleigh.
We will.
We'll take a road trip.
A caravan.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have some items of new business. First is a resolution of support for construction of Acousta Trail section between Canouga and South Main Street.
Mayor vote, members of City Council. The preliminary plans for the construction of the Acousta Trail indicate that construction will begin at Canouga Road and proceed through Laurel Park to the Henderson County boundary. Staff believes that the appropriate starting point for the trail should be at South Main Street. We also had a large public input meeting and received lots of comments from our public that they agree it should begin at South Main Street. Therefore, staff has developed a resolution asking the Rails to Trail Advisory Committee to support the construction of the South Main to Canouga section during Phase One of the project and as an act of good faith, offer to pay for the initial engineering of $246,000 to have this area designed and engineered so that it is ready for construction as part of the first phase of the project. So we ask you to adopt that resolution. And then we'll direct, we'll ask Brent Datweiler, our city engineer, who's part of the Rails to Trails Advisory Committee, to take that to the meeting and present that to the board and ask them to support it.
Any questions? Comments? And how about a motion? Madam? Go for it, Debbie.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt the resolution supporting the construction of the Acousta Trail section between Canouga and South Main Street as a part of Phase One construction.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not, we will go ahead and vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. Ayes have it. Pass that motion, and hopefully, they will do that for us. Next, Hendersonville Water and Sewer Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have before you a, I would call it a final draft because we want your input. We went through, we engaged Fountain Works with Warren Miller about, well, it was a little over a year ago, and started the process. We met with our internal stakeholders on several different occasions along with Warren. And this was back when everything was virtual. And we actually did have one meeting. One of our meetings was live. And we developed what you have before you tonight. We've also taken this, the concept, to the Water and Sewer Advisory Council. We actually took that, took it to them in concept in May. And then, as a result of that, we've added, you know, some of their comments and thoughts. And what you have before you now is the results of all of that collaboration. And we're seeking your input and hopefully approval or amendment, whatever you see fit. And I'm not going to read everything because it's a little dry, but.
Not at all.
Point out the highlights.
Is that a pun?
High points. You know, this is kind of a, I guess you'd call it a roadmap. It kind of gives us some direction and kind of spells out what our values are. And as you can see on the first page, talks about great customer service, accountability, affordability, quality in the environment, protecting infrastructure from hazards, partnership and teamwork, planning for the future, adaptability, and being a great place to work. So those were kind of our, those were our values. Based on that, we developed focus areas which kind of spelled out the different parts or the different ways we would accomplish, stick with those values. So the first focus area was utility growth and service area. And we spelled out some priorities. Revenue and rates was certainly a priority. Stakeholder involvement, which we're, we've done with this particular process and would like to continue to do so. Increased engagement of the Water and Sewer Technical Advisory Committee. And then we get to coordinating and planning. We have to continue efforts and complete the CIP projects, expand sewer into public health, into areas of public health concerns, and to establish policies for incorporation of small systems, small water systems typically. Next, we, our next focus area was infrastructure. And some of the priorities were to replace aging and undersized infrastructure, which we have quite a bit. Finalize policies to extend water and sewer, which we have done. Finalize engineering and design manuals. That's sort of an ongoing process. That's, you never really have a finished product. Focus area three, water supply and treatment. Our priorities there were to expand the water treatment plant to 15 million gallons per day. Complete the French Broad River intake and pumping station project, which is, believe it or not, we've had the pre-construction meeting, and we're getting closer. Establish new process to dispose of wastewater treatment biosolids and water treatment residuals from the, obviously, from the water plant. They actually produce sludge as well. Complete Urton Hill Reservoir Number Two Rehab Project and the North Fork dredging project, which Adam Starr, who is here tonight, he's working diligently on both of those projects. Create and fill some additional positions that we had, you know, back when we were discussing this particular plan, but to continue that forward. Complete water treatment facility master plan, which we've actually kicked off, the start of that and are in the information compiling, data compiling. Focus area number four is wastewater treatment. There, we talked about upgrading our UV disinfection, which we've got a project currently going to do that. Improve and evolve our repair and maintenance plan. Create and fill positions related to wastewater treatment. Finalize our wastewater treatment facility master plan, which we have done. Continue to discharge high-quality effluent, which we certainly strive to do that every day. Customer service, improve customer service or customer interaction with train staff. We develop standard operating procedures, which we work on regularly. Continuously restructure and improve website, which we're, that is a, that's something that's always in motion. We're always trying to go through and update information. And continuously restructure, I'm sorry. I meant to say to better navigability and transparency. Those are important aspects of the website, obviously. Inform customers about available technology like Alcohol Hawk and like Rave. Try to get better participation so we can communicate better with our customers. Number six was environmental stewardship, conservation, and outreach. Identify and coordinate with other public outreach initiatives along with our, with Allison, our communications manager for the city, and social media. Continue facilitating the tours and outreach. We can, we're finally starting to see a little bit more of that come about, which is a good sign. Review and add environmental programs to support conservation of water and the environment, our environment. Expand our recruitment strategies, offer more training, and expand our physical office space, which is certainly going to be a need or is a need. Number eight is technology, data, and software. Our priorities here were to establish, to ensure existing data is utilized and integrated to the fullest each day. Improve data availability and accuracy, which is, that's always a concern. Increase accessibility of existing technology. We're trying to, we've got data in numerous data silos. We're trying to get them, get it to where we can actually view a lot of this data more readily together because you have to go to, you know, five or six different sources to put everything together. We're trying to get that, the technology in place where we can view this more comprehensively. Identify technology deficiencies and redundancies. And then we, it talks about some of our key performance indicators, which I'm not going to read those. If you have any questions about those or about the plan, I'm here to answer any questions. Yes?
Under vulnerabilities, the very first bullet says engineering and administrative staff are overwhelmed by project load.
Yes.
So I guess my question to you is, and of course, the next one is operations staff is overwhelmed. So as a council, how do you want us to interpret those comments? I'm not criticizing. I'm like, what does that mean?
Well, we're working each year requesting personnel. I know Brent has a, he has a civil engineer, I think, in his budget. Right.
It's being advertised now. If you know the engineers.
So, yeah, we're working with John and with Brian and Adam to, matter of fact, we met today to talk about that very topic, about personnel. So this is, it's an ongoing process. And we're trying to, we'll, we'll always need people, but we're getting, we're getting close.
Do we run into a similar challenge that, as with police and fire, that we are competing with other water systems for the same employees?
We are, it depends on what the job is that you're talking about. With our field personnel, probably not. With more technical staff, yeah, certainly, we are. It just depends on how close some of these utilities are for some of our field personnel. A lot of them, they live in the county, they don't want to move, they don't want to drive somewhere else. But some of our technical personnel, they can certainly move on. So, yeah, we are definitely competing. Parts of our staff are, we're certainly competing with other utilities. But you folks have done a huge thing to help that. So, and we greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, I guess we're asking you to approve if you want to approve it as is or any.
That's the next motion to come up? More discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council adopts the Hendersonville Water and Sewer Strategic Plan as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not, we will vote on this one. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor also votes aye. Ayes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
A lot of work went into it.
We appreciate your support.
We do appreciate that. Thank you. A, kind of related to that, a resolution to apply for funding for the wastewater treatment facility biosolids dryer project.
Yes, good evening. Yes, and this project was actually identified in that strategic plan, I think, to a T. So it fits well in in several of those focus areas. So the intent of the item is to apply for funding for a clean water state revolving fund. These are low-interest loan, 20-year loans through the state, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. I hear it's the cheapest money we can get. So it's a good way to fund the project. And also, we just wanted to talk a little bit about the loan and the operation of the dryer. This system was the recommended alternative in our recently approved solids management plan, where we looked at our solids management strategies at our water plant and our wastewater plant. So at the wastewater plant, this was the recommended alternative. So I guess I'll go ahead. I don't know if you guys, you guys have the sheets in front of you. But we'll start off, I guess, just talking about our wastewater treatment facility biosolids production over the past five years. Right now, we're producing a biosolid that is 16% solid. So that's about 84% liquid or water. They're currently classified as a non-hazardous solid waste, and they're being disposed of at permitted landfills. Right now, our solids are going, there's a landfill in Waynesville. They were hauling those solids. You can see there's a large increase in the production of our biosolids at our wastewater plant in years 2020 and 2021. That was due to a process modification at the facility that was recommended to improve the treatment. We were overloading a certain treatment process, and we're wasting more. We're producing more solids. So that, that is what that significant jump was. And you can also see, you know, the blue line, the blue dots there are for the past five years. So look to project out what we're going to produce out to 2050. And that is a linear trend there. That's assuming 160 wet tons are produced annually each year. It's an increase. That's the average of the past, the past years that we have here, excluding 2020, when we saw that significant jump. I do want to point out that in our wastewater treatment facility, or, excuse me, our solids, our sewer collection system master plan, we did project what kind of growth we would see. Because that number, that solids production number is directly related to system growth. And the more connections we receive, the more solids we produce. And the master plan, which we did assume a pretty aggressive growth, that number would have been 295 wet tons per year, which is almost double that on this line. But we wanted to go ahead and try to show you here the more conservative production number. It could be greater, it could be less. The wastewater treatment, the master plan, we're predicting growth, is saying a lot more. So this is less here to be conservative. Also, I want to point out on that chart that the grayed-out triangles, this dryer will produce a solid that is 90% solids, so 10% water. So we're taking out all of that water that we're hauling to landfills. And you can see that the tons we produce, that's, that's a pretty big reduction. It's actually about 82% reduction in just the mass. And the solid that we will produce with this dryer is considered a Class A material. It's very nutrient-rich. It can be beneficially reused in agricultural applications, landscaping, landfill cover. The town of Milwaukee has actually been doing this since 1920, and they actually sell bags of their biosolids. They call it Mergolite. their biosolids. They call it Mergolite. And so they're actually bringing, they're making money, or they're, they're bringing in some money. I don't know if they're making money off their wastewater, but they're bringing in some money. So, you know, our intent was we, we would produce the solids and, and we could have the community members come and pick this up. We, we could give it to local agriculture, you know, farmers, they could land apply it, or, you know, even, it could be landfill cover. So I guess the next thing I want to, if we could just jump down to the, the last screen, I'll just kind of talk through this. So kind of looking out, looking at our costs for landfill disposal, that's the red line. So you can see, before the past year or two, our landfill disposal costs, which included hauling and tipping fees to the landfill, we were paying $55 a ton or so. Recently, that's jumped up to $95 a ton. And the, you know, that's just unreliable, leaves us very vulnerable. The landfills, they're increasing their tipping fees. Basically, they're saying our, our solids are too wet, which causes a lot of issues operationally at their facility. So they're either limiting what they will take from our facilities, or they're increasing their tipping fees. And we've actually, we've, we've been going to several landfills. South Carolina, I think we've been, we've taken some of our solids to a landfill even east of Charlotte, which is about a 300-mile round trip. So, and then inherently, with the cost of fuel and hauling, we, we don't see it to decrease any soon. So that, that curve there, that assumes our landfill disposal fees will increase at 2.32% annually, which that's the, that's the number that Henderson County actually uses when they project, you know, for their trans, their solid waste operation. That's, that's the same number they're using to build out their, their future schedule. So good number there. And that's starting at the, the current rate we're paying, which is about $95 a ton. And then I want to look at the orange line there. So kind of talk through a little bit of that. So, you know, assuming this dryer is constructed and is operational in 2026, for this analysis, we assumed that the first two years, we would continue hauling those materials to a landfill. The quantity of the material is drastically reduced, as you saw, but that's what that little hump in the curve is, is that's that disposal cost. And then, in the orange line, that's the SRF loan at one and a half percent, which would be half of the market rate, which we're assuming is 3%. So those loan repayments, and then the additional costs that we'd have with the dryer, natural gas, electricity, labor, and maintenance costs. And then the blue line is, is the same cost, but we're assuming a, we don't get the SRF one and a half percent 20-year loan, and it's, it's a 3% loan, which I think is pretty similar to what the rate we've been getting on our revenue bonds for a lot of our other capital projects. The one thing, looking at the, the numbers here, I think the one thing that this doesn't show is the vulnerability that the current disposal market has. We're really subject to the landfill's whim. And, you know, those, as we saw recently, those costs can, can skyrocket unexpectedly, placing a burden on, you know, the utility rate payers. So I think that's about all I had. The last picture, the last slide is an example of a drying facility. We toured the city of Lenore's wastewater facility, similar-sized wastewater plant, and, and there's a picture of their dry, I think it's under construction there. But it's just an example of, of what that drying facility, it's, it's kind of, it's really a big pizza oven, natural gas pizza oven, and then the waste goes through. Yeah, I wish I had a sample, I could show you and shake it.
Don't ruin pizza oven.
Any word for it?
So anyways, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
It's going to take four years to get it installed?
Get the pizza oven installed?
So the typical SRF, you know, you have to go through design and bidding, and that, that's probably more of a conservative estimate. Hopefully, it would be operational before, but, but yeah, 2026.
Is there any utilities oversight in North Carolina with regard to what landfills charge? Because, I mean, utilities have to take this somewhere, right?
Yeah.
They can't put it in the backyard.
No, yeah.
But they're totally, completely subject to the whim of the private markets with regard to driving it off.
Yeah, as far as I'm, I'm aware, you know, Asheville, their water department faced a similar challenge, I'd say, a couple of years ago. They were historically taking their solids at their, their water plant to MSD, who has an incinerator. And MSD cut them off, you know, said, you're not taking it here anymore. So they were kind of in a, a little bit of a panic, and they are contracting out a third-party management firm. But, but no, I'm, I'm not aware of any, you know, regulatory agency that, because the Waynesville landfill was recently acquired by Republic Waste Services. So that change in hands may have had something to do with that increase in tipping fees. But, yeah. And, and it's very difficult to get a landfill permitted, and there's not a lot of landfills in this part of the state either. So.
Any other questions?
I just keep thinking about what we're going to call the stuff at the end. Like, they have a fun name, and I feel like we need a fun name.
Yeah. Well, a lot of people call it sludge. I prefer to call it biosolids. So we can start with biosolids. But yeah, we can certainly leave that, that open, and, and you can get the first shovel if, if you'd like, and put it on your yard.
That one for you. NDBS.
And do. All right.
Slurry.
Thank you.
Great. So I guess the, the resolution is just to apply for funding, and we should find out if we receive the funding later in the summer. So.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council adopt the resolution by the City Council to apply for funding for the wastewater treatment facilities biosolids thermal dryer project as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not? We will vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Eyes have it, and motion carries. Can get that request off.
Pizza oven going.
Pizza oven, man. I can't unsee that.
Yep. All right. Now, we had two items that are from the consent agenda. The first is Q, a resolution in support of an application by the city of Brevard for USDOT RACE grant funding to construct the Acusta Trail in Transylvania County.
Mayor, council, good evening. So the city of Brevard is applying for what's called a RACE grant, which the acronym stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. That's a grant that's available through USDOT, and so it's a federal grant. There is an upwards of a billion and a half dollars available. So the, Brevard is applying for that to actually pay for design and construction of the Transylvania County portion of the Acusta Trail. So since the city of Hendersonville, Hendersonville City Council has always been behind the, the Acusta and regional trails in general, we thought it fitting to ask City Council to, to adopt a resolution in support of their application, that they would then include in their application, which is due in, I believe, April 14th.
Thank you, Brittany. And I just ask to have it moved here, just to keep the Acusta Trail and everything we do in support of that, and encourage residents, whether you're Hendersonville or not, to reach out to your local officials and advocate strongly for anything they're doing to get this Acusta Trail constructed. This would be a major piece coming from the other direction.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you like to make that motion then?
Yes, ma'am. I move that City Council approve the resolution in support of an application by the city of Brevard for a USDOT RACE grant funding to construct the Acusta Trail in Transylvania County.
Is there any discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you. The eyes have it, the motion passes, and we will get that letter of support off to them. And then finally, T, special event, thanks to Henderson County Teachers Celebration.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So this was reviewed at a recent Special Events Committee meeting. It is a thanks to Henderson County Teachers Celebration. It's organized by Joey Moore, and it's sponsored by Skip Sawyer, State Farm agent on Main Street. It is a brand-new event, and it's scheduled for Thursday, June 2, 2022, in the 100 block of Main Street. And most of the activities, which is, of course, the courthouse block, most of the activities will take place on the courtyard of the historic square, but they are proposing to close Main Street to traffic. And it is an opportunity to celebrate and show our community-wide appreciation for teachers, particularly in light of all of the extra work that they did during the pandemic. And for those of us who are parents, recognition of just how important they are in our life and sanity. But that's June 20, June 2, 2022, which is actually a Thursday evening.
Okay. And we'll be in City Council.
Yeah. And the Special Events Committee did unanimously vote to recommend approval.
We'll be there in spirit.
Well, who knows what time it starts? It may start right after school, who knows?
Okay.
Because it didn't have a start time on there.
If, if, if possible, we can be there. All right. Someone like to make that motion?
Yes, ma'am. I move that City Council approve the special event permit for the thanks to Henderson County Teachers Celebration on June the 2nd.
Okay. Is there any discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. The eyes have it, and motion carries. And hope they have a good turnout for that event.
It is the night before the last school.
Oh, okay.
It's perfect timing.
Party. All right. We have some appointments to make. The Asheville Regional Housing Consortium, the staff member who was in that position is not with us, so we have an open seat here. And I did hear that Mr. Connet was willing to fill that seat.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we doing it? Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint City Manager John Connet to serve as the city of Hendersonville representative, as a member of the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium.
Okay. Are there further nominations? Not? We will vote those who wish to appoint Mr. Connet to serve on the Housing Consortium. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And we thank you for taking that on. Next, the Pedestrian Plan Steering Committee. And Mr. Detwiler?
Evening again. In the spirit of additional pedestrian thoughts, the pedestrian plan, we received a $65,000 grant from NC DOT, and they are, they're, they've hired a consultant, and they're using that money directly. And we're working with Traffic Planning Design is the, the consultant. And as part of the process, there's an ad hoc steering committee that is, that will help to set goals, look at various projects, potential pedestrian projects, network recommendations for getting folks around town, and they'll also look at a draft plan for review. There is a time commitment of nine, anticipated about nine to 12 hours over a 12-month period. The, the plan itself will take about 12 months to complete. DOT presented a list of some of their recommendations for folks that would make sense for stakeholders. They included NC DOT reps, MPO rep, YMCA, bicycling or pedestrian advocates, school system rep, representative from county staff, city council representative. And then there are several staff members, city staff, and the consultants will act as liaisons. So that's, that's their DOT's list of recommended folks that they, they provided. So we, city, city staff kind of put together a list, contacted folks see, to see who would be interested. Some folks reached out to us, and that, that list is, I believe, in your packet. And so we're just asking for City Council to, to bless that and determine who on City Council would like the, the honor of serving on that ad hoc steering committee. Draw straws.
I think it's me.
Okay.
I think I volunteered too.
Uh-oh.
But I don't care, it's fine.
I mean, I don't, I don't care either. Somebody else pick who.
Who wants to do it?
Well, Jen's also going to the MPO meeting, so it might make more sense for her to do it. You like that?
I'm, I'm, the two of you determine who, what name we're going to call right now. That would be fun on Zoom.
Yeah, how are we going to do that?
Do rock, paper, scissors. That could be fun. Put a number behind someone's back.
Okay. Well, if, if you feel Ms. Hensley as the, our transportation representative would be more appropriate?
I mean, I think so.
Okay. I'm looking at the list here.
There's the name Mike.
Yeah, so the, the list didn't quite get completed. And I thi, I think the folks in red, or the, the placeholders in red are, are being excluded. We hope to fill those in. But we do have, I, I believe there are 16 members, which is, which is plenty, you know. And talking with DOT and the consultant, they thought that that was a really good number, so.
I count 17.
17.
That, that includes the DOT representative. Okay. Someone like to make a motion that those people be appointed to the steering committee?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the Pedestrian Plan Steering Committee and membership as presented, along with Councilmember Hensley.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for this committee? Not? We will go ahead and vote for the names listed, and including Councilmember Hensley as the city representative. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So eyes have it, motion carries, and you've got committee to start work.
Thank you.
Thank you. How long do you think this is going to take?
About 12 months.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Council comments? Anything?
I have two.
You thought you had something?
The first one is to remind everyone that on May 22, we are celebrating the birthday of this great city.
Yep.
And we will be in front of the courthouse downtown from 2:00 to 4:00. Everyone's invited. We got cake.
Or cookies, or cupcakes, or something.
Right. We'll just, we'll just say cake. We got cake.
Treats.
John is going to blow out the candle?
No.
No, you're not going to blow out the candle?
I, I think it should be an elected official.
Okay.
Weber has a lot of.
Treats.
John is going to blow out the candle?
No.
No, you're not going to blow out the candle?
I think it should be an elected official.
Okay.
Weber has a lot of...
I don't think we blow out candles in here.
I'm just kidding. We can finally blow out birthday candles again. So that's my first. My second one, and this is a request from Development Department, and that is, can we get an update on the Greenville Highway mixed-use ordinance change?
So we are working on that. In the sort of general direction that we received previously, we were looking at an ordinance change that addressed any of the base zoning districts that did not currently include the 50,000-square-foot trigger for redevelopment and/or anything that was a residential district that didn't. So we posted, we actually included that in the list of public hearings for the planning board meeting on April, and we are working, it was not in the initial agenda, but we are working to get it in there, and believe that we should be able to do that, so. But the proposed zoning text amendment that would be reviewed by the planning board includes a amendment to Article 4, which would establish the 50,000-square-foot threshold across all of the base zoning districts that the city has on the map. And we'll have presentation information on how that will impact each of the zoning districts. It impacts each of them slightly differently. It basically fall into four categories. I apologize for my voice, it's about shot today. As you can imagine, I talk a lot.
How about the height issue at Greenville? That was, the buildings were allowed to be taller, that was 42 feet. Is that also being addressed?
It is not in the zoning text amendment that we're working on currently.
So if we wanted to change that, does that have to be a text amendment, a text amendment as well?
Yes, it would. Yeah, it would. And I will note that the elevation, that building height is more significantly varied based on the zoning district that you're in. So that would, if that were a desire to, on council's part, to cap that in specific districts or across the city, it would, it would probably require a little bit more of a exploration in terms of which zoning districts have what sort of height cap. The 50,000-square-foot trigger is a little bit more, I don't want to say it's easier to apply, but, but there is a component of the zoning district, or zoning ordinance that we're, we're able to install that, whereas the height limitation would probably have to be addressed in each individual zoning district, because it's a standard that would be specific to the districts. But, yeah, it, it's another text amendment.
Well, I mean, I'll ask council, I don't know what direction you need, but I would be in favor of changing the height in just the Greenville Highway mixed-use, because that's the only one I know about that we were aware of, back to 35 feet, so that buildings would only be three stories tall. Versus 42 feet, which appears to allow for a four-story building.
Is that the only one, though, that has that?
As a height limit, no.
Okay.
So, I mean, that varies, right?
Yeah.
You can do up to 64 in C1 and where we have the...
Right.
And you can go beyond that in some of our zoning districts when you're not within the height limitations of the downtown. So we have our unique local district bill that limits height within the downtown area, and then our individual zoning districts have height limits. The one that you probably are all most familiar with is Planned Residential, which I believe is 35 feet, which you have the authority to vary to a certain degree, based on the SUN study, and you all have looked at some of those before. But some of the other commercial highway mixed-use, or highway mixed-use, Greenville Highway mixed-use, urban residential, some of those have different height restrictions. So, you know, if the direction were to look at three-story for all of those, or to, to apply it to specific zoning districts, that would just require that we would review that. I do not have a chart that I could pull out today...
That sounds like the proverbial deep dive.
...show you which, which districts are currently, where the height limitation is in specific districts, and, but that is certainly some, the type of information we could pull together and would pull together in developing a text amendment.
A quick reference chart would be useful.
Yes. Yeah, we've discussed that internally.
Could we agree to get a reference chart and go from there if we wanted to change any?
Okay. Yeah. I think that would be helpful, looking at the differences in districts, because I can't see that one height would be appropriate for every district in the city.
I agree completely. I was released on my Greenville Highway.
We can do that.
I think too, with the comprehensive plan right now going on, I kind of would like to just allow that process to take place too, before making a lot of zoning changes. And so I don't know if I feel comfortable making any zoning changes right now.
Well, we're just asking to get a, our thumbnail of the various height changes in, or differences in the zoning districts.
Okay. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Clear enough.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone has?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just want to say what an honor it is to serve the city of Hendersonville, and thank you to the rest of the staff and council for allowing me to attend this meeting virtually. So far this week, we are bringing home one gold, two silvers, and one bronze from downhill racing in Slalom and Giant Slalom. And it's, it's great to, I know that it takes extra work for you guys to be able to do this, and just thanks for allowing me to do both of them.
You're very welcome. They'll have to come with their medals on and parade for us sometime. City manager report.
Fair vote, members of City Council, just point out that your cash and investment report is included in your agenda. We currently have $20.5 million invested in a variety of investments, and also we have just almost another $20 million in undispersed bond proceeds that we'll be spending out over the next couple of years related to the parking deck and water and sewer projects. So that report is available. If you have any questions, we can put you in contact with John Buchanan, our finance director.
Okay. Thank you. We do need a closed session?
Ready.
If someone would like to do that motion?
Okay. I move that City Council enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 1, 4, and 5, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States, or not considered a public record, within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. And, and 3, okay, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and to consider the acquisition of property for economic development?
And economic.
Sorry, and economic development.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any discussion? Not? We'll vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. We are in closed...